Good evening. It hasn't been six o'clock. Welcome to the school committee meeting of August 23rd. If everyone could please stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And would you please remain standing for a moment of silence for one of our retired teachers, Susan York-Bart from Duval, who passed away recently. Okay, thank you.
I just, I text Mr. Gravio on the way to hear back.
Okay. As always, I can call you. Yeah. We're in a lot of yeah. We're in a lot of yeah.
Thanks. Okay. Before I go into public comment today, I want to, well, the superintendent, I'm going to correct a couple misunderstandings and miscommunications that have been going on. The first one I'm going to talk about is about public comment. Now, a few years back, I think it was 2020?
Twenty twenty.
The school committee passed a policy about public comment at that time, and it was unanimously voted in. Public comment, people didn't understand was you speak to anything on the agenda or anything not on the agenda that the school committee would have something to do with. Unlike some school, unlike some committees, that you can only speak to things that are not on the agenda, that's not true here. You may speak at the time of public comment on anything on the agenda that you wish to speak to. Everybody will be given three minutes, and it's allotted, and we are going by the Mass State School Committee, the 15 minutes. After that, it will be school committee business. Now, there will be some exceptions, like during budget times when we need to speak to union reps here. So there will be certain exceptions, so I want you to understand that if I call on somebody during a time, maybe like with the union reps, if we're discussing something that has to do with the employees, then I would be calling on them. So I hope that has cleared that part up about what everybody understands, because this is a school committee business meeting, and it is public, okay? But the public comment is at the beginning. The other miscommunication that we would like to talk about is about the books. So I'm going to leave it up to the superintendent to talk about the policy on groups that give us books and what happens with them.
Beth?
Yes.
Can I comment on the first part before you get into something else?
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, the issue of public comments been brought to my attention by people outside of our committee and within. That's why I'd ask how to put it on the agenda, because I think it's worthy of discussion. I think a lot of us take very seriously the notion that we represent our constituents, and we should have their best interest in mind, and if they have something to come up and speak to specifically as part of a discussion, that's, you know, as important as some of the ones we've had recently. I think we should be open to that, and at least we should talk to the rest of the board and get the input from the rest of the board and make a decision, you know, with some kind of consensus.
Well, then, I'd like to put it to the policy committee, since it is a policy already that we are following. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, the policy was not followed.
Mm-hmm.
I read the policy, and I'm following the policy, so therefore, I'd like to refer it to the policy committee.
Sure. We can certainly address that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll come back with a recommendation.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could just bring on Mr. Scriven's remarks. I couldn't agree more that we want participation, and if we are discussing something and the public wants to have something that they can add to our discussion that hasn't already been brought up. So, you know, they can have an opportunity to voice their opinion and, you know, their viewpoint. I think that that's what we give.
Okay, well, we can discuss that after it comes back.
I want to make sure I said that in public.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
That's fine. Okay, go ahead, Don. I don't want to keep this going. I just, I'm trying.
Chair, I'd like to support your initiative to send it to policy subcommittee, but I feel the committee should vote, and I'd like to just make a motion that we do send this to subcommittee. So I think that would be a formal process to simply, so make a motion to send public comment to our subcommittee for further review.
Sure.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Glenn's not on, so we can do it. So it's unanimous.
Okay.
Okay. The other is about the policy on book giving.
Yep, so I'll address that. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Beth. I actually wrote up a quick statement, then I'm going to talk about the policy that we actually do have. I think there was a, at the last meeting, we had the word books and donations from a certain group, Whitman Pride, and putting things in our library. I got some questions from some parents, tried to respond to it. We have a set guideline that we use, and not everybody in the world can just send their books here. Although, I will tell people in the public, we get donations or books from all over the country sometimes. Here, buy this book. What do you think? And we go through a formal review process. So let me just read what I have written down, and we'll go from there. So the regulations for the Massachusetts Students' Rights Law, MGL, Chapter 76, Section 5, states that all public school systems, through their curricula, encourage respect for the human and civil rights of all individuals, regardless of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, and sexual, or sexual orientation. In addition, the rubric in which building administrators and teachers will be evaluated, will evaluate, no, it's all students, and specifies that this includes, but is not limited to, those who identify as Black, Hispanic, Latino, Asian, Indigenous, and multiracial students, students with disabilities, English learners, LGBTQ plus students, students experiencing homelessness, and/or financial insecurity. Specifically to help students implement, or schools implement state laws impacting LGBTQ plus students, including the state's anti-bullying law, gender identity law, and student anti-discrimination law, the state's schools program for LGBTQ plus students was founded. It is a joint initiative between the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Massachusetts Commission on LGBTQ Youth. Thus, it is with DESI's guidelines, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's guidelines, coupled with the research recommendations from the educational and school librarian, library organizations, and the input from our professional staff, including district librarian, curriculum coordinators and directors, principals, and my central office team, that I rely to make final decisions regarding textbooks and educational materials. Suggestions or recommendations from any community member or organization about books or resources are simply that, recommendations. That does not mean they are incorporated. We do have a policy, IJL, Library Materials Selection and Adoption. The school committee endorses the School Library Bill of Rights, as adopted by the American Library Association, which asserts that the responsibility of the school library is to: One, provide materials that will enrich and support the curriculum, taking into consideration the varied interests, abilities, and maturity levels of the students served. Two, provide materials that will stimulate growth in factual knowledge, literary appreciation, aesthetic values, and ethical standards. Three, provide a background of information that will enable students to make intelligent judgments in their daily lives. Four, provide materials of, an opposing side of controversial issues, so that young citizens may develop, under guidance, the practice of critical thinking and reading. Five, provide materials representative of the many religious, ethnic, and cultural groups and their contributions to our American heritage. Six, place principle above personal opinion and reason above prejudice in the selection of materials of the highest quality in order to assure a comprehensive collection of appropriate for uses of the library. Initial purchase suggestions for library materials may come from all personnel, teachers, coordinators, and administrators. Students will also be encouraged to make selections. The librarian will recommend materials to be included in the school library. Final approval and authority for distribution of funds will rest with the building principal, subject to the approval of the superintendent. Gifts of library books will be accepted in keeping with the above policy on selection. Complaints about library books will be handled in line with the committee policy on complaints and instructional materials. So we do actually have a policy on how we accept books. Books, like, you know, off of this, George and I had a conversation, and as principals, we used to get recommendations for books and other materials to distribute within schools from a variety of sources. You know, we brought up, you know, the auxiliary who would give us, or the American Legion who would give us calendars. You know, different groups do that. So we vet this and make sure that it is age-appropriate and user-friendly for our librarians, based upon the criteria used by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the professional judgments of our teachers, administrators, and professional staff, including central offices. So I just wanted to put that a little, we do, it's not just anybody in the world can send us a book and we put it in libraries. It's educationally based, and they're all vetted through our principals, and if not central office, with question, according to the policy as approved by the school committee.
And that means nobody can go and put things in our library without us knowing it. It just can't happen. Okay? And also, I forgot to add with the public comment. When you make public comment, the school committee does not respond to your public comment. We accept your comment. Okay? We accept it and say thank you. Okay? That's part of also the policy, so just everybody knows that you just say thank you. And it was that way. Okay? So now, finally, we can get to public comment. So do I have somebody who would like to speak during public comment, please?
May I say something about the books, the donation books first, please? What Jeff was speaking about?
Glenn's on hold, so, yeah. He's, we're trying to get him. I'm not sure why he's on hold.
And I know what hold is?
I don't know.
I'm holding.
While George is doing it, I can take Steve's question, no problem.
Okay.
Well, it just says material that's donated, or, one here, it says supports the curriculum. So whatever books are coming in, there has to be a specific curriculum that's being taught in this school system for that book to somehow match up with that existing curriculum. It can't just be a book about anything, or anybody's.
No, there has to be, there has to be a basis for that. And if that book was, didn't really fit that, we would go to the DESI guidelines to see if that book's on an approved list as far as age-appropriate material and how that fits into what we are teaching our students.
Okay.
Correct.
Jeff, could I get that Mass guideline, please? Where you started out with one, not this, you have a?
Yeah, I can put it in the packet. It's a website off of DESI.
Perfect. Thank you.
Got him?
Glenn, do you hear? What button is it, Jeff?
I don't know, because I don't know why it would be on hold.
Glenn, do you hear me? Do you want to get the old phone system back?
No.
When I do that, it says it goes home. Did he type in the?
Yeah, I don't know if he typed in the PIN.
Okay, well, obviously, over there, and you're back.
Thanks, Vanna.
Okay, don't stop the cameras.
You think maybe he knows? Okay, so, public comment. Make sure you identify yourself and you add your face.
Sean Kane, 31 Forest Street. I'm speaking on behalf of myself as individual, not for the select board. You had an important conversation at your last meeting. You were discussing inclusivity and tolerance, the celebration of diversity, meaningful symbols, and the initiative to paint a rainbow crosswork on, crosswalk on school grounds. A thorough presentation was made, and then you formally began to deliberate. Unfortunately, before the vote, you refused to let public comment on the issue. As an active citizen in our community, I believe this is a red flag. The library was full of people who attended the meeting. There were parents, therapists, former school committee members, and at least one student present. All those individuals cared enough about the issue on one side or the other to show up and engage in the process, but they weren't allowed to speak. And here's my concern. When we refuse to allow public comment, we do not benefit from potentially vital information that we otherwise wouldn't be aware of, and we deprive ourselves of the diverse perspectives that are not available on the board, not always available on the board. And what kind of message does that send to our constituents? Honestly, it feels somewhat arrogant and exclusive to me, the opposite of the inclusive nature of the initiative you were discussing. Some may argue that we don't have the ability for everyone to speak at the meeting. I don't think there's a reason, a reason to prevent public comment. In my experience, a chair can moderate a long discussion by simply requesting that people limit their comments to new information and perspectives to prevent repeating, and place a time limit on the mic. Others might argue that individuals had the ability to make public comment just at the beginning of the meeting, the 15 minutes that you discussed earlier. That alternative doesn't, it also feels kind of odd to me, because how could a student at the last meeting speak intelligently about the initiative prior to the presentation that was given? Because it was given after public comment, obviously. That doesn't seem logical. Public comment at the beginning of the meeting should be designated for those issues that are not on the agenda, in my opinion. But why wouldn't the public be able to comment on something that is on the agenda during the discussion portion of the issue? Doing so would engage people in the process at a time when we desperately need active citizens, and we need help to find meaningful and meaningful resolutions to some of the complex issues in our community. Last meeting, unfortunately, I observed people who felt dismissed and frustrated. For this reading reason, respectfully, I'd ask that you please reconsider the policy subcommittee, your protocol on public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I would like, want to make one correction. I know I said we're not supposed to respond, but the young man who got up to speak, the student, was a member of the Strategic Plan Committee, so he was speaking on behalf of his membership on that committee. So not, not as a, a member of the public. I just want to make sure that that's understood. Okay?
Yeah, I remember.
Okay. Who else? We have another? Someone else? John?
Hello, everybody. Excuse me. John Galvin, 41 High Street in Whitman. Yesterday, I took the time to email y'all a document that was included in the certified budget back in April. This was approved by this committee, as well as theoretically approved by both town meetings back in May. The reason why I think this document is so interesting and should have some more attention paid to it is because it's the only document within the budget packet that actually gives us a forecast of something going forward on what we need to look at and be aware of. And that's why I wanted it to bring to your attention. Obviously, this document was prepared back in April, so a lot of the numbers that are currently on this document have changed. I mean, right off the bat, Chapter 70 numbers on here, were based on $30 per pupil, and we know they came in at $60 per pupil. But conversely, the busing numbers on here, the bus reimbursement numbers on here are significantly higher than what we actually got. So my point is, is that this is a document that needs to, it's a fluid document. It needs to continue to be updated and continue to be presented to the school committee and available to citizens like myself, who like to get involved and analyze things. My main concern on this document that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention was the revenue part, side of it. Back in April, with the changes that were made last minute with the actual fiscal 24 budget, we used the E and D, the towns changed the way they were willing to supply revenue, these numbers changed this document at the very last minute. So when you first certified this document the first time around, the second time around, it changed. Obviously, numbers changed. My concern is the impact going forward for fiscal 25, and that's why I emailed you. Currently, at the last time this was officially presented, which was back then, it forecasted that the assessments for the two towns were significantly, would need to be significantly higher than what they were this year. Estimated at 9.25 for Whitman, which is over $1.6 million increase, and eight, over 8% for Hanson, which is about a $1.1 million increase. Now, based on the budget cycle last year, we all know what happened in that last meeting. It wasn't pretty, that last budget meeting in Whitman Town Hall. But I think what my point here is to get this, to this group's attention, and to really get, and get Mr. Stanbrook to continue to update this document, and I know he's not here tonight, so that we can see how these numbers evolve and what becomes of these. Because that's going to be the most critical part of this next budget cycle, is where is the revenue going to come from? And this document is an important tool in helping us figure that out. And anybody who is watching and wants to look at this document, it's Document 23, and it is on the district's website. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
How you doing? My name is Dan McDonough, Carrick Road in Hanson. Just speaking on the partnership of the Whitman Pride and the school board. I just want to say, as a father, obviously, countrywide, this, this issue of gender confusion is very deadly and very, you know, divisive, countrywide. So the partnership that was made between the school board and the Pride, I understand Jeff spoke eloquently about the books and the process with that. I also understand they were going to talk about a partnership between the wellness program. So my main concern as a father is just how early these discussions are happening. It is a massive rise, you know, countrywide, up to 15 to 1400 percent, sorry, 1500 to 4,000 percent, and, you know, that must have a play to it. So that's, my only concern is the protection of elementary school and how early we're talking about it, and parents should be included in that conversation when we are talking to someone that, you know. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Let me just take that word and address that question on wellness, if you don't mind. Let me just add, the wellness, the wellness program is coming directly from the Commonwealth. It's really not in association with Whitman Pride at all. But I would encourage parents, it's, the new wellness curriculum for the Commonwealth is up for public comment.
Okay.
So it's open, it's not, hasn't passed into effect yet. So if parents have, it's open for anybody across the Commonwealth. And there are strong revisions to the old curriculum.
Very good.
That deadline is August 28th for public comment to DESI.
Okay. Did you hear that? August 28th?
August 28th. Glenn is on.
Hi, Glenn.
George, can you turn that up, the volume? Just volume.
Okay.
Just volume. Yeah, Hannah, volume. Yeah. All right.
Glenn?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right.
Okay. Glenn.
I can sit back down. Thank you.
Yep, perfect.
All right. So due to the fact that, okay, good, Glenn. Due to the fact that we have a couple members missing tonight, and Chris and I discussed this, our next item is the norms. We would really like everybody to be present when we're discussing the norms, because then everybody, as Chris said, would have, you know, a part of the game. They'd be in the game to do this. So to discuss the norms with not everybody here doesn't really seem appropriate to the two of us to discuss this, and we thought we'd put it on the next one. And hopefully, that everybody will be here so that we can do so. I would like a motion to pass over.
So move. Second.
All in favor? We have to roll call?
Yes, roll call.
Steve?
Yes.
Steve? Don?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have on is the Seal of Biliteracy Report. This is something new, so, very important.
Very excited. Good evening, members of the school committee. Thank you for this time. I'm happy to be here this evening to share information about DESI's Seal of Biliteracy and what this means for Whitman.
Bring the mic down. A little closer. Yep. Thank you.
Vertically, chow.
Put the teacher voice on, Nick.
I know. So, starting again, thank you for this time. I'm happy to be here this evening to share with you information about DESI's Seal of Biliteracy and what this means for Whitman-Hanson, and to help me present this opportunity with you, I am beyond pleased to introduce Felicia Barbosa, our fabulous district family liaison for multilingual learners.
Thank you. Good evening, school committee members. It's an honor to be here tonight. O meu nome é Felicia Barbosa. Eu fui estudante aqui no nosso distrito escolar de Whitman-Hanson. E é uma honra para mim poder estar aqui essa noite. E é uma honra estar na presença de várias pessoas conhecidas, tal como a Miss Stafford, que foi a minha professora da sexta série. Estamos aqui hoje para falar sobre o selo de biliteracia, e o que significa receber esse selo para os nossos alunos. You may have been surprised to just hear me speak in Portuguese. Portuguese is my second language, and this is one experience that many of our multilingual learners have when they come to school every day. That same thing you just experienced hearing me speak in Portuguese is their experience. So what I said to you in Portuguese was, my name is Felicia Barbosa. I was a student of Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. It's an honor to be here in the presence of many familiar faces, one of which includes Miss Stafford, who was my sixth grade social studies teacher. We're here tonight to talk about the Seal of Biliteracy and how, what that looks like for our students. Regardless of the challenges of many of our multilingual learners they face, they still rise up to the challenge that they're presented with. Many of them, by the time that they graduate, they're proficient in English by the time that they leave us. So we want to be able to honor them and award them for how much that they've achieved by achieving proficiency in English. We recognize that being a multilingual learner is an asset, and a huge part of the reason why I even have the job that I have today is because I have the capability to speak two languages. Unfortunately, when I was in school, we didn't offer the Seal of Biliteracy, but I would have loved to have this opportunity. I have a different experience than our multilingual learners, where English is my first language. Portuguese is actually my second language. I learned when I was seven years old. So I share an experience with many of our first language English, I'm going to read it, yes, first language English speakers. I share an experience with them where they come to school, to high school, and they learn a second language. So I share that experience with them. Our hope is that by offering this distinction, it will encourage students to pursue a second language while also maintaining the proficiency in their first language. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as included in your packets this evening, the Massachusetts Seal of Biliteracy recognizes high school graduates who attain proficiency in English and one other world language by graduation. It is a credential that is recognized by both colleges and employers as a skill. Whitman-Hanson Regional School District will now join over 170 other districts in the Commonwealth offering the seal. We are excited to celebrate multilingualism and recognize the efforts of our English learners in becoming proficient in English in addition to their first language, as well as our English, our first language English speakers for their efforts in learning a second world language while in high school. We are really beyond excited, actually, at this initiative, and thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but it is in your packet, and this information entails all of what is included in the Seal of Biliteracy. So thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Comments? Don?
Thank you so much for the presentation. For first language English speakers, can you predict how many years of a second language they would typically need in a school system to obtain proficiency for this?
So we will be offering it to our seniors in their, in spring, because we want to give them the best opportunity. Ideally, we would love to see, through the initiatives that George has worked on in the past, where we try to bring back some sort of world language to the middle schools, it would give our students the best opportunity. That being said, we did pilot this year, and our students, they did well. They didn't, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't achieve the threshold yet, but they were juniors, so, whom we piloted with. So we're hopeful, and that being said, we are partnering with Kristen Thomas, the World Language Department Chair, with this initiative as well. So she'll be working with those students to get them ready. But ideally, we would love to see some sort of form of world language at some point be something that, you know, we, we look at as a district, if we can.
Right, right. I think one follow-up, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that the current year juniors are the years, if we historically remember, that did not receive that second year in middle school of a language in eighth grade. It got removed from the school system. So it's good to hear that current juniors were close to receiving that, and hopefully, you know, with four years, you know, under their belt or something. Would they be eligible the senior year to take the test, or does it need to happen in junior year?
It will happen, actually, in their senior year. We just piloted it with the juniors, because the seniors in this year were very busy, had, weren't expecting it, was something we were asking of them extra. But going into next year now, it's going to be a part of a senior curriculum in the world languages to prepare for this in spring, for those who are interested in trying to see if they are proficient.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Nice to see you, Felicia.
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
Mr. Farrell? Some good news today?
I do believe I have some good news, and hopefully I can explain myself better than
I did playing with the. Oh, so good evening, folks. I'm here to talk about something that we received at the Whitman Middle School for the next five years. So as you know, we have had what's called an additional learning time grant at the high school for years, where we are able to offer students from eighth grade coming into ninth grade who are identified needing extra support. They have a summer program here, they earn some credits here, and then during the course of the school year, students who are either identified or self-identify as having some needs, academic needs, social, emotional needs, things of that nature, we always offer four days a week, we offer an after-school program. The highlight of that program is that we also offer late bus transportation. So Chris Skutek, who is one of our math teachers here and has run this program, he took over for Maureen Leonard, if you remember that name, he has now applied for another school. So he applied to bring this type of enrichment, social skills, after-school and summer program that includes transportation to the Whitman Middle School. It is not, and we received it. So officially, it is FY 2024, the FC 0647, 21st Century CCLC Grant for supporting additional learning time. It is a federal competitive grant that then the state offers. It is, the Whitman Hansen Regional School District is being awarded $214,000 for the proposed site at the Whitman Middle School. The total award is $214,000. The amount is $154,000 during the year and $60,000 for the summer reserve. And it is also a five-year grant. So for the next five years, the high school continues on their continuum, this is now brought to the Whitman Middle School. There was a decision made, there's nothing for elementary at this time for this grant. There was a decision made with Chris Skutek in looking at our numbers and in talking to the middle school principals, that at this point in time, due to the needs of the Whitman Middle School, because you can only go for one school at a time, we chose to put forth Whitman Middle. The goal next year is in the spring, when this grant opportunity opens up, we would choose to do it for Hanson Middle School. So that you would, we would have the ability from grade six to 12, with state support and state funding, be able to offer remedial, social, emotional enrichment pieces at both middle schools and the high school. And the best thing about it is it offers late transportation. And in offering late bus transportation, you are also able to help other students who might be after school for pieces to also get home. But for now, we're going to be at the site we've always has been, always had been at the high school. We're branching out year one of five at the Whitman Middle School, and the goal is to make that successful, and then hopefully be in the queue for another school, which would be the Hanson Middle School the year after. But it's exciting news, we're going to have a separate site coordinator from a stipend that'll be a teacher at that school. Chris Skutek, this grant also comes with some manipulation of funds where Chris Skutek is now going to be the person who's in charge of all 21st Century remedial and after-school learning. And what's nice about it is during the grant at the high school, and because of the grant now at the middle school, we are able to transition him out of the classroom, bring back a math teacher to take his math duties, but it's still paid for out of the grants. So it's at no extra cost to the district or the local budget. And we're hopeful that we'll be able to attract and help more students, just like we've had a successful program at the high school.
And I just want to clarify, almost a little confused in the way you said, so the value of this grant is over a million dollars?
Yes, 214,000, but they do it yearly. They do it yearly.
But it's 214 annually guaranteed for five years.
Annually, year one, yep. Where FY 24 is guaranteed, and it continues for five years. You still have to do the requirements, but in getting this grant, as long as you fulfill the requirements, it's a five-year grant.
No budgetary impact whatsoever?
No budgetary impact at this point, yeah. That, what I know in my crystal ball for one year, you're correct.
Chris?
So George, can you just kind of give me an understanding of how this would work?
Sure.
Are students recommended for this program? Is it open to anyone? Like, what's?
Sure, so for right now, I can give you, because it's still being formed, but what happens at the high school? So what happens at the high school is, is we look towards eighth grade, and in eighth grade, we identify students from both Whitman and Hanson, but let's stick specifically to what's happening with this. Identified students who are in need, what does need mean? Could be absent, could be academic, could be from a social, emotional need, could be from a language barrier need, could be whatever it is, they, they are generated on a list. That list is then given to Chris Skutek and his team here. So as students leave the eighth grade, they're identified, they're offered the opportunity to take part in this summer enrichment program. At the high school, what it does is you have the ability to also gain credits. So you take part in this and you gain some credits that would then be used to help you if you're suffering from a loss of credit in a subject area. We call these floating credits, and you can gain up to four by active participation in this. So what that does is that helps ease the transition for some students, we already know who might be struggling. They come to the summer, they get a layout of the school, they meet the staff, because the staff is a combination of some eighth grade counselors that they knew, and then the high school staff that they'll be knowing. And then the program lasts approximately five weeks. It also has field trips built into it, it also has opportunities for like, hey, here's a debit card, what does that look like? You know, it also offers opportunities for career, for career learning. And so when we think about it then, at the context of the middle school, the goal, overarching goal right now is that middle school staff would be employed. So during the week, let's call it Monday through Thursday, there would be four days a week with the late bus. After-school would be enrichment activities. These enrichment activities could be anything from, it's cooking, it's sewing, it could be chess, it could be that, there's an opportunity for snack, there's a built-in time then for academic reinforcement, so whether it's after-school help and something or else, and then you'd stay till four o'clock. And the goal is, is that you want to identify these students who have been identified as having some concern with a better relationship and a different kind of relationship with the staff at the school, so that as they go throughout their daily school, they're getting help in things other than the schoolwork, they're getting help in the schoolwork, and they're making those positive connections with different groups of adults. So that, that's the concept. Now it'll roll into reality. Grand, Mr. Frost, Whitman Middle School Principal, is excited for it. He's excited to start working with Chris and the group, and he already has teachers and paraprofessionals and people who are willing to be a part of it.
And there may be students pulled in during the year?
Yeah, so now at the middle school, we're going to start that even earlier. So it would be like counselors with grade six, counselors with grade seven. The nice part about the middle school is that even with regular after-school programs, we were never really to offer transportation. But now you have the ability, because the grant pays for, as long as all the students directly connected with the grant have transportation, if there are extra spots on, on the buses, other students would also be able to partake in it.
Great, thank you. And this is, this is an offer for kids too. It's not a mandate.
Yeah.
It's an offer. So like over the summer, you know, we offer it to 75 to 80 incoming freshmen, 35 to 40 taking, you know, if they want to do it. It's at no cost, and quite a few of the students are able to gain credit. So they start off their freshman year with credit. So culinary might be two credits, art might be two credits. So it's not necessarily literacy and numeracy over the summer, so you're not in a summer school classroom, you're in an enrichment classroom with the ability to earn some credit. So it's a really good transition for some of our risk.
And also one more thing, just because this is so tied to the state, part of Chris's job is that he works with the people and the other school districts who've applied for this and gotten it. So there are things that the director has to do from a perspective of state mandates, but it is also like professional development for him and his group, so it's not everything they don't have to think of on their own. There is a support network for the people who are doing this to make sure they can do it the best they can and to continue with it in the best way possible.
Yeah, I just had one follow-up question. I know at times it's been an issue of kids hanging around after school.
Sure.
And I'm wondering if they have an opportunity to join this group?
Yeah, so a lot of this, so I'll put it to you this way. There were some students who hung around after school and maybe didn't want to participate, so maybe their after-school time was a little more unstructured than some people would have liked. But they also have the opportunity to be a part of this. So should they want to be, they can, should they, should they even have other after-school activities, and they're in good standing and doing the right thing, and then they can get the bus ride home? But the goal is, is to take advantage of those times after school where kids might be around, to offer them things they might want to do, and then to be able to proceed from there.
Thank you.
Chris?
My interpretation is Chris's initiative.
Yes.
To go out and attain this.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion that we, if you entertain the motion even, that we send a letter on behalf of the committee thanking him for taking that initiative with heartfelt appreciation. I mean, this is just a wonderful thing to be able to provide a service, and there's no impact. I mean, it's a win-win-win.
Quite a positive.
Absolutely.
So we started this in 2010, I don't know, whoever.
I know Maureen.
Yeah, Maureen, but we started this with Mission Possible, and it started with moving students from Compass back to the high school. So we were awarded that first year, and it's just, we've been able to, we have a really good in with the state with this, with 21st Century and after-school program. So I think it's a, I'm not cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to achieve this next year for, for the other school and keep it going to our elementaries as the money's provided by the state.
This is great, and it's a wonderful thing.
So are you making a motion?
A motion that we.
I thought he did.
Drafted a letter expressing our heartfelt thanks on behalf of the committee to Chris for his endeavors, initiative, and efforts.
Second.
Second, okay. And so we have to do?
Roll call.
May I just follow up one comment?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you. And, and we can't say enough about the transportation piece, because I know Whitman Middle and Hanson Middle offers after-school programs. There has been some clubs, but we are two communities of working families. And, and myself as a working parent, you know, I would not have been able to get there to pick my child up at those hours, even though I would have liked for them to, to be able to participate. So can't say enough about that piece being included in the grant. It's wonderful, thank you.
All right, Steve?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Yes.
And Frank? Myself? Yes. And Glenn?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that was unanimous. Okay, thank you. Thank you, George.
Thanks.
So we're going to talk a little transportation right now, and just give you a little update on our guidelines. We made a move in our guidelines to alleviate some of the discomfort that we incorporate or we had last year as far as bus rides. As you know, last fall through the winter, some of our bus rides, especially in Hanson, were running, our inbound and our outbound routes were running close to 45 minutes, maybe close to 50 in some cases, and some parents were concerned, members of the school committee were concerned. So ways we could modify that, suggestions were add a bus. We necessarily can't add a bus. Remember, state reimbursables mandated us to have 75% capacity on our buses, which means I just can't willy-nilly add a bus, even if we had the finances to do, which we did not. So we called around to our colleagues and said, how do you do busing? What's, what's fair for students to be able to, to be picked up? It's not door-to-door service, it's, it's a school bus. State guidelines is basically what we used, and we modified our guidelines to allow or have students not, or buses not go into cul-de-sacs as turnarounds unless really necessary. And when I say really necessary, there might be some bad people living in the area, so it's not safe for students to walk out to the bus stop. But elementary students will be asked to walk up to .75 miles to their bus stop. Right now, I believe the furthest length that a student's walking is .61. And our high school students and middle school students going up to 1 point, or 1 point, or 1 mile. And I'm not sure of that. Doing that, and I'll just say, the good news out of that, doing that changed some of the routes that without doing that, Indian Head had routes going at 35 minutes, 38 minutes, 38 minutes, 42 minutes, 29 minutes, 45 minutes to 38 minutes. Now I can safely say the longest ride at Indian Head is 32 minutes, and the shortest is, is 28. The longest ride at Hanson is, Hanson Middle is 34. The longest ride at Duval is 27. The longest ride at Conley is 23. The longest ride at Whitman is 26, and the high school is 32. But the majority of students are now under 30 minutes, between 25 and 30 minutes on a bus, significantly decreasing that 45 to 50 minute bus ride, especially on the Indian Head side.
Okay, Frank?
Will this alleviate quite a lot of the dropping off at the end of the driveway?
Yes.
Because it's the number one thing I seem to get phone calls about.
Yes, yes. So I, I think, I think, you know, I'm telling the committee, some parents, this is a change, but it's a change for the good of all, and to try to shorten those routes, because we did hear about it, especially when we talked about our five-year-olds and six-year-olds being on a bus for almost an hour, a long day. So we made this modification, again, within the state guidelines for transportation, and then talking to our colleagues. Our colleagues in the area don't do door-to-door service, even though those students pay for the bus. We don't, students don't pay for the bus here, and we have to stick to that 75% capacity on those buses so that we're eligible for state reimbursement. So Karen sent out the transportation stuff today, so I'm telling you now, we might get some phone calls later on. I think it's a good thing for our district, and it'll make, it might, and I, I think Mr. Kane's still here, he made a comment last year about students walking, because it's good for them and wellness. So we took that into consideration as well. And hopefully, and Karen Vila-Wave is a parent here in town and said, well, in our neighborhood, we all used to pick a day, and who was going to walk the kids to the bus stop, and who was going to pick them up? So maybe we can get a little more neighborly and a little bit more communication out of this. But it will eliminate that longer ride, especially in inclement weather, whatever. We should, and once our drivers, and our driver crisis is, seems to be passing a little, so, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to misspeak, but it seems like we will have our drivers back that know the routes, that will know them within that first week of school, so our kids will get home, get to school and from school safely and more efficient than, than we have in the past. You may not know this, but the impact to the budget, positive, negative? There is none, there is none. Zero. Zero. There is none. I just also wanted to say thank you for, you know, trying to be creative and provide a solution for something that was a pretty, you know, involved conversation, and there's a lot of public comment through those meetings that have resulted in this, so I appreciate that.
Agreed.
Can I just add too, the, the reason transportation's difficult, and Karen can't just roll it over, even if she eliminates a senior, so just to give you a little idea, since, since July, the, the second week of July, Conley has enrolled 17 students, Duval has enrolled 11, Indian Head 13, Hanson Middle School 4, Whitman Middle School 10, and High School 34.
Wow.
So that's up till, hot off the press yesterday. So to run a bus route, remember, all students have that opportunity to take that bus, she really can't run it too early to get a benchmark of where we're at until we really have some solid numbers on, on enrollment. That's how many students, and I don't have the numbers who exited, because we do have kids that exit. But those are the, the amount of students that, that came in over that timeframe. Thank you.
Don?
Thanks. I'm just looking at the packet. On the second page, it mentions about, the, the district does provide semi-annual safety training for students, so we know they do bus safety training. I just wanted to mention, if the district has ever looked into the support that MassDOT provides, it's called Safe Routes to School.
Yes.
So I'm just reading online, it's, it's free and federally funded program. So through MassDOT, they work with districts to increase safe walking, biking, and rolling, whether it be on a scooter, to, to public schools, and they just bridge the gap between wellness, we talked about that earlier, and transportation. So, and there are grants from time to time where they can work with our member communities in any sidewalks and, and crosswalks, support like that. So I wanted to mention that up, mention that, because you talk about safety in regards to.
Absolutely, thanks. And it's funny, I got an email from MassDOT last week on that safety.
Excellent.
Skill Schools Program.
And, and one last question about crossing guards, because it's mentioned on the third page, section C. Can, can you just share, it does say that number three, students will be expected to walk to group bus stops, students in K through eight cannot cross the major routes except where a crossing guard is posted. So I understand those are circumstances in Whitman, and crossing guards are provided. How does the district work with the towns when a crossing guard is needed or, you know, in, in the police departments?
So you want to add that because you're more familiar with the crossing guards? We don't, the, the police department hires those crossing guards? So we really, you know, George knows them from working with them. I've had to meet them because they're not our employee.
Okay.
So, yeah, so currently, I, I think it's either out of the selectmen line or the police line that the crossing guards are hired. If there's a, they're, they're only in Whitman. If there is an issue where something has to be done, then what would take place is that, that issue of concern would go from either citizens or would go from the staff members who are talking about it. So like, for example, there was a, a lot of question one year on Forest Street and Route 18. At the top of Forest Street and Route 18, do we need one there? So what took place was our school safety officers, our SROs went there, they talked about it, they determined that it wasn't. But if there is the choice or there is, if there is an issue, then that would be brought from the SROs to the town so they can make an informed decision. But the hiring of crossing guards and the placing of crossing guards and the payment of crossing guards is not a school department issue, it is a town issue. Currently, we have them on Regal Street for Duval, we have them on Corthell, we have them down then on, what is that, Highland Street. Right after that, we have them at the Marcello's pieces there. And that's, if I, I believe I'm correct, that's, that's where we have them only.
Okay. So we can expect those same ones this year?
Yeah, I believe so. And if there's ever an issue, and we've had some issues of personality in the past, we've had conversations with Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Beth, and Jeff, thank you very much. That rule of having the bus minimal, minimum of 75% full, is that in, in part of this consideration or is that rule not applied?
So the rule, the, it's for reimbursables, the capacity of the district.
Of the reimbursement.
So we have to have, for, for state reimbursement, because we're a regional school district, we have to show 75, 75% capacity on all our buses. Not individual buses, but capacity within the district.
Oh, that's what, okay.
So it's not, this bus is 70, it's capacity within the district.
Of eligible riders.
Of eligible riders.
So it is not, it is not who gets on the bus. It is of the students, where they live, who are eligible to ride a bus, they have to have a seat. From there, you have to fill your buses as a fleet. The 75% are over for regional transportation reimbursement.
And I, I do have to commend Karen Villanueva also. Chris, you said thinking outside the box. First student was, they have a variety of sizes of buses. And they wanted to give us bigger buses, which would hurt our capacity. Okay? Not through anybody's fault, but Karen requested smaller buses that we could fill to capacity, same cost, because it works for our students better. So again, taking some initiative, thinking outside the box and asking the questions and having some time to actually delineate and think through this, I think we've come up with some good guidelines and some solutions.
Yeah, I, I, excuse me, I just can't help but think back to when John Galvin was, you know, such an integral part of this conversation and he brought so many interesting and enlightening points to our attention as a way of commenting publicly at our meeting. So I appreciate that and I hope we can continue to do more of that.
And he gets a free ride.
And that's why, you know, people wonder, well, we don't see that, the buses coming from the high school really filled, why don't we cut it down? We can't. You have to offer the bus for anybody who, it's available for anybody who qualifies. So, you know, that, that's what comes on there. Because I always used to wonder that myself.
Yep.
And the crossing guard at Highland Ave, that's a, the intersection with V O Ave and Temple. V O Ave is also known as Voice Lane.
Oh, is it really? I'm sure, I'm surprised they don't have an actual police officer there.
I'd be on my way home.
They do, they're just on the speed trap.
That's up there in Hilltop.
Okay. The next one is school committee goals. And Dawn, you have some, you want something, talk about something under consideration here.
Thank you. Yes, I did ask to put on the agenda, school committee goals for this coming year in reviewing our district policies. We, we do have a policy BA for school committee operational goals. So it, number four, it says to establish practical and simple goals. So I am not saying what our goals should be, but I'm hoping that, and, and I did ask for this back in June, I'll say that I watched a, a learning lunch with Mass Association of School Committees that talked about committees setting goals, along with the superintendent, which we know he sets goals and will be soon for this coming year. And I think it's important, given, you know, our, our history with our member towns, that as a district, the superintendent sets goals and I think our committee should set similar goals that are aligned. And that will be our roadmap forward. And, and it will help to sort of tell our story of where we're going, along with our strategic plan. So it's, it's just my thought, and this was again, back in June, perhaps that the committee, if it had time over the summer, could have, you know, perhaps done some professional development and discussing and brainstorming goals and maybe come into the year in September. But since we've, we've got it now.
And George has some comments he'd like to speak to on that.
Dovetails what Dawn's saying, I just wanted to provide a little context from where we're at with the strategic plan and Jeff's goals. So basically, what's taking place is that you all have the strategic plan and we're forming the action steps that come from there. So far, the decisions that have been made, there were six strategic objectives in the strategic plan. One was student access, two was communication, three was curriculum, four was community and culture, five was staff recruitment, development and retention, and six were resources, be those physical, human or fiscal. So what's gonna take place is we will have one action step under each of those categories as we begin this year. Now we talk about Jeff's goals. Jeff's goals are gonna be tied to the four standards that he will be evaluated on, which are instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement and professional culture. So as we talk about school committee goals, unless they're a standalone dysfunction of this committee, if they're gonna dovetail, then what we're gonna show you in September is, is here's the action steps, here's how the strategic plan and Jeff goals merge into them. And then the idea would be whatever emanates from the school committee goals would then fit under those highlighted sections also. So that if Jeff is thinking about something under, let's say, instructional leadership, that would tie to the curriculum standard of the strategic plan, that then might go to the re-engagement or the reinstitution of the pursuit of, let's say, foreign language because we talked about it tonight. So the goal would be is that whatever happens from this body would dovetail with what Jeff has to do and then would dovetail into the big picture of the strategic plan for that year.
Yes, Chris?
I know we've talked in the past about maybe changing up the way we evaluate, the form, the rubric, right? I'm just, my question is, are, is your, are your roles based on that rubric, taken from that rubric?
I have four standards that I have to look into. And the rubric is set from the state for you to look at. You can modify any which way you want to do that.
Right. Well, that's what I'm getting at. So I, I think we.
I just need to know how you're, what, what the plan would be, so I can work around that.
Exactly. That gets to my point. If we are going to look at that, wouldn't it be now that we're looking at it? You know what I mean? So I'm just bringing that up because I know we talked about it in the past.
So if I can, so you can, you folks obviously have the ability to do what you feel, it's just that currently for DESI, those standards and then the overall grade would still have to have one of the four scores as either needs improvement, something proficient or exemplary, I forgot the second one. Unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient or exemplary. So you can design the process by which you get to that grade, you know, for Jeff, but that grade, according to DESI regulations, has to go in.
Gotcha.
At that time.
Thank you.
Okay. Dawn, you got a follow-up?
Yeah, yeah, one follow-up. There's, there's another policy, so it was BA and then this is under governance of school committee and then BAA, which is evaluation of school committee operational procedures. So in turn, if the committee sets its goals, we then self-evaluate ourselves too. So the committee looks internally at how are we doing? And, and the policy, and I'll leave it to you all to read, but there's a listing of nine areas that the committee can evaluate itself on. And ironically, the first one says communication with the public, right? How are we doing, right? How are we doing with that? So I think that, that's something I wanted to simply, and thank you for putting it on the agenda, to address it and just be sure that we as a committee are setting goals, evaluating ourselves, how we're doing and aligning those with the superintendent.
Okay. So come up with a lot of suggestions here.
Or just points.
But it's, but the point is Jeff sets his goals, you know, pretty early or in the school year, that if we're going to do something that dovetails, then we need to do that, you know, either in a meeting and come up with things or have even a separate meeting that deals with that. So I need, you know, some comment on that. Yes, Fred?
Yeah, while I respect Jeff for having his particular goals, sometimes the commitment of the school committee or the idea of the school committee would be something that Jeff would support, but it may not be one of his particular goals.
That's right.
You know, I think if we're gonna do something like this, it'd be appropriate to do a workshop and bring out George's big easel.
Big easel.
And, you know, try to identify, first off, how many areas.
Are we gonna do?
We want, we want to try for, or, you know, to identify. And then what we want to identify. You know, just hearing, you know, speaking of foreign language, I know George was able to find a great solution for, for the economics of being able to add that foreign language. I mean, our budget, I don't want to feed it that horse and I'm not gonna get into how, you know, crazy things are. But is that a goal that we can try to strive for? The robotics that Georgia presented last year? I can taste that. I think it would just be such a wonderful thing in today's world. Is that something? You know, do we want to focus on programs or do we want to focus on structure? And I think doing it in a workshop atmosphere.
I agree.
You know, we could come up with something.
I agree. And that's why I was looking for somebody's to say, because I didn't want to make the, you know, suggestion myself, I want to come from the, yes, Steve?
And Beth, just giving Jeff the 110% support, everything that we can and anything we can do, you know, I sometimes wonder, who are we to sort of judge the superintendent? This man's like a superhero. Every time. And you know, I'm, I'm not kidding you, I'd say this every time at evaluation. It's just like, who would live through this living, there's a certain way that you go there? And just knowing, I mean, yeah, it's all for kids, but it's just so immense sometimes.
So one thing, I, I appreciate those comments. The goal for the committee though, too, it doesn't have to be school year, September to June. You could say you wanted goals to run from October 1st to September 1st, encompassing that whole time. So, you know, I'm kind of limited to what we can do within that school year. I don't want to set goals before my kids get here. So we'll be doing that on September 15th. But I, I think even one year, we, I ended up setting goals in middle October, but trying to hit that June date for, because my evaluation's due in June. The state wants it, I have to have it. You can self-evaluate over a year or even two years to make sure it's, it's elongated. I think, Dawn, it's a really good idea to do some self-reflection from the committee point, which would assist me too, to know where you're all at and how we're moving forward. And to Fred's point, you know, with different programs, whatever you so choose, it doesn't have to align with what I'm doing that year. You know, hopefully we're all going forward, but, you know, you might focus in on finances where I might not, and I might focus on our program. And you guys, as the, the public relations folks and the people that assert the budget, really focus in on how to get that budget passed and leave the other piece to me. So I'm not as worried about, I'm worried about it, but you're doing the behind-the-scenes work with your, with your constituents. So I like the idea and I think workshop is an ideal time to do it.
Okay. And how does everybody feel about that? Can I have some other responses, please? Not just Fred. How do you feel? Steven, what do you think? You're new, what do you think?
I certainly am new. I'm just trying to take it all in and I, I don't fully understand. A self-assessment of what we do here and how I'm coming along, learning the process, it's still very early.
Oh, yeah. But I'm just saying, you know, to have a workshop so that we would all learn because we haven't done that.
I would be, would welcome a type of workshop. I always do. Any type of learning.
Okay, so are we talking night or Saturday?
I would say, so I'll reach out to MASC and I know Dorothy Presser and one of the folks up there would be very willing to come out and facilitate a goals workshop. And I would say it could be a Saturday or it could be an evening, either or.
Can I just follow up on Steve's comment? Just to give you some background, Steve, we've done this in the past where we've kind of, everybody came up with like three ideas and they want to have us implement as our goals. And then we just voted on it and then we, you know, however the vote came out, it came out and then we, as a committee, we moved forward. So it was a very productive exercise in the past. Is it more or less a conversation of the things we're doing individually to learn more or? It could be anything that you feel is important for us to focus on. Understood. Yeah.
Actually, what you just said, I have a question for Dawn. Is that when you say goals, do you want to get back to what we've done in the past, what Chris just said, where we all came up with ideas and we did the working groups and is that what you mean when you say goals? Because we have done that in the past where we've met all summer and we broke out into our groups and is that what you're speaking of? Or do you have different ideas when you say goals?
Well, first, what I learned from listening to the MASC like 60-minute lunch and learn session is that Dorothy Presser at MASC does have a tool, which is a self-evaluation. So I think that's in combination, but as far as what type of goals to set.
Yeah.
That would really be up to everyone individually, collectively. But in looking at the policy, it kind of helps too. I mean, it covers all categories, which I mentioned, communication with the public, superintendent, committee relationships, individual school committee member development and performance policy, educational, fiscal management, school committee meetings themselves. So really, as all areas, like where do you feel where, where in, in need of support? Where do you feel we're strong, right? Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities?
If I may, I, I think it has, that speaks to the, the idea of having goals and the process by which we get there is kind of up to us.
Okay.
That's how I understand.
Because this is kind of the first summer that we didn't do those things that we have been successful in the past. So I wasn't sure if you meant that or if, there's just a little bit of everything. So I just was, wanted it to be.
I think those workshops were helpful.
They really were.
With the superintendent and budget-wise, where do we want our district to go educationally too? But sometimes it's, it's, maybe this hints to norms, right? How do we function together and what do we want together as a school committee?
I think anytime we get together as a committee and come away with a, you know, a general understanding of where we are, where we want to go, is a good idea.
And the small working groups always are successful when we kind of instant break up into brainstorming ideas of what works and things like that as well, so.
Okay. So we'll have Jeff get in contact with them and see if we can set up a date.
Okay.
So I'll probably throw like a, I, I don't want to say a Google survey, but I'll probably some, you can't, don't respond all at once on a reply off, but I'll say, what are some times that you're available? And then I'll throw that out to their, to them. Night, Saturday, something like that. See what the preponderance is and then I'll get in touch with them over the next couple weeks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dawn, this is, you have Chapter 70 discussion.
Chapter 70 discussion, again, another idea for continuous learning and, and understanding of Chapter 70. So I, self-admittedly, am a numbers person and a numbers geek and Chapter 70 is all about funding and numbers. But I also appreciate the history of Chapter 70. So just real quickly, it goes back to 1993 and the Ed Reform Act is why we get state aid, which is called Chapter 70. And I would really love if we can continue to learn as a district about the state aid we get. And MASC does provide a resource also. Tracy Novick will do a targeted presentation on Whitman and Hanson's numbers. I know Hanson as a town just had a independent person come in and talk about Chapter 72, but I think you can never learn enough. And every time I attend a session, I learn something new and something more about it. So it, it's not for me to discuss these numbers right now, that wasn't my reason for putting this on here, but I do understand with the Student Opportunity Act, right now, we're at that threshold where we saw the change last year and these numbers are very dependent on our enrollment and, and also on the increases that are going to continue for the next three years of state aid. And we've seen it in the governor's budget and it is, education is, is being fully funded right now as far as this goes. So that was it. What do I just say?
So if the folks are interested to, I can reach out to Tracy and look for sometime late October, early November. That would give us time to have a workshop right as we come into some, some budget conversations just for an understanding. And a workshop, just for people at home, a workshop is a school committee meeting, but not an official meeting. Public's invited, but it's not necessarily recorded, live, and it's open discussion. There are no votes taken during a workshop. It's all for education. It's like school committee professional development. So it's a learning experience for that. But the public's invited, not encouraged to engage, but are here to see what happens. It's kind of like when the towns did their strategic planning meeting and the public was invited, but not encouraged to engage, so.
We did have a Chapter 71 last year, didn't we? Yes.
We, we, we had, who did we have last year, George? We had, not Roger.
Rob O'Donnell?
We had Rob O'Donnell.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably Rob O'Donnell, Roger Hattis.
Yeah, we went to one last year. Rob.
But Roger's still out and about, but it was Ross.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was really good.
Him and Elizabeth King are doing some sort of a private.
But I'll reach out.
But even with the numbers updating every year.
Correct.
Because the chart changes.
Because the chart changes. So I'll look into that for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, before we go to new business, I want to, and it's not on the agenda, but I think it's really important. We changed our schedule, our time for meetings for the summer to six o'clock. It has not worked out really well for some people. So I want to see if we need to, to see everybody's opinion. Do we go back to the 6:30 or do we stay at the six? So I need input from the committee. Okay, so I realize this is not on the agenda, but I think it's a real important discussion. Yes, Chris, you go first.
Yeah, I understand how hard it can be sometimes for people to make meeting times. So at this particular timeframe, 6:00, 6:30, I'm completely flexible and I'd like to do what's best for everyone on the committee.
Okay, Fred?
Pretty much I can make any time. But I do know even going back not too many years ago, it was seven o'clock.
Yeah, I remember seven o'clock, yeah.
You know, and it was that way for the first eight or nine years of my being on the committee.
I remember that too.
You know, it was 7:00 PM. So, you know, I don't know if that would be a consideration, if that would be easier for people as well. I'm pretty much, you know.
6:00, 6:30 is fine.
Able to be here.
6:30 works much better for me.
6:30 works much better for you, Steve?
6:30.
6:30.
6:30 would be the latest I'd like to go.
I'm fine with any change.
You're fine with any change. Glenn, how about you? 6:30 better for you?
I would prefer 6:30, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And David had, David had.
If it was 6:30, I probably would have made it.
Okay. David also prefers the 6:30. He texted me earlier. I had specifically asked him about, you know, time wise and he said 6:30. That's, he couldn't make it because he was working, so.
I think it's fine, we can just move back to 6:30.
I guess the majority.
We'll move away from summer hours, we'll go back to fall.
Back to fall hours, is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, I think it's a great precedent to set where you were establishing meeting times and a conducive for everyone to attend. It's a good precedent.
That's an honor to do. Okay, so the next meeting will be at 6:30 then, okay?
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. 6:30 for the public to know also. I know that's a little bit more difficult for the employees who work here. That's why six is better because they have to stay longer.
Good, 6:30 is okay. Seven, 7:30 is tough.
Seven, that's a little too much. Okay, so Jeff, it's back to you for this proposal.
Sure. So I received, I apologize to Ms. Pierce Metten. She sent us an email or sent me an email last October about maybe naming something after John and Agnes Pierce. It came back around a couple of weeks ago and I'd just like to read the letter she wrote to me. Hello, my name is Beth Pierce Metten. I'm the niece of John and Agnes Pierce. I would like to honor the years of service that Agnes and John gave to the Whitman School System. John worked as the head custodian at Conley School for 17 years. Agnes started her 36 career, 36-year career at Gurnee School and finished as the principal of the Conley School. There's a path from the back of the Conley School down Belmont Street where Agnes and John lived. Frank Lineham looked into this piece of property. The property is part of multiple lots relegated to the school for building the Forest Street School now, now the Conley School. Care and custody are assigned to the Whitman Hansen Regional School District. Any naming is up to the school district. Frank Lineham suggested I reach out to you about this. I was hoping that the Whitman Hansen Regional School District would consider naming the path and placing a plaque. Pierce Path, John and Agnes Pierce, Agnes Pierce, 36 years in the Whitman School System, Gurnee School to the principal of Conley School, John Pierce, head custodian of the Conley School for 17 years. I'm sure this message could use some touch up, but that is the message I would like to put forth. I hope you can help me. So my next step is to talk to you folks. I don't have necessarily any objection, but I don't even, I don't know where that is, so. And I don't know these two folks.
Sure, well, I do.
I do too.
I happen to know both of them. I knew them, I should say. Wonderful people. Agnes, very hardworking principal, very committed to the school for many years. John, her husband, was a very personable person. He was one of those guys that you could talk to about anything. And he was so into the kids that he was often a mentor to a lot of the young students. They're both a lovely couple. They were there for years at the same school and lived, like they said, right around the corner from the school. So they were constantly walking that path. So, and Chris, you said first.
Yes, I knew John and Agnes, both neighbors of mine, a few doors down. And to your point, Beth, you know, I, I often talk about like culture and things like that and trying to impress upon people that work in the district how very important it is to make kids feel comfortable, right? And sometimes it's simple gestures, sometimes it's whatever. But he was an exemplary example of taking that on himself to always make every kid feel like they belonged, like somebody cared about them. And I can attest to that firsthand. So I'm thrilled to hear about this. I didn't know about this, but I would adamantly support this and I think it's a great idea.
Fred?
I would like to say that we also within the district do have a past precedent. I don't know if some of you are aware, the dugouts at the baseball field. Donnie Westhaver had come to the committee years back. Sergeant Major Donahue, who is a student here, who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our country. Those dugouts, the roofings were built, you know, the dugouts themselves were built. They fundraised, there's a plaque there on the stone, I believe. And there was a dedication. So there is past precedence of doing this. It doesn't sound like there's going to be any real cost to the district other than a plaque. And I think it would be a wonderful way to, you know, memorize some folks that gave a lot.
Right, there are more precedents. My dad is one of them. The field at Indian Head School is named after my father, who arranged to have the CBs come and help dig that out and make that. And there's a plaque for him down at.
I thought the dirt for the middle school, I think.
And, you know, and then we also had a plaque for one of the teachers who unfortunately lost her life. And that was at McQuone, but that's going to be relocated too. So we have done this many times, it's not new.
I mean, if you're willing to accept the motion to place a plaque in memory of John and Agnes Pierce in the location that they are requesting and to work on the language, just to make sure it says what they wanted to say. I'm sure it'll be appropriate. I will gladly make that motion.
A second.
Second, and one discussion, sure.
I was just going to ask that same question or bring up that point about crafting the language. Because I, you know, I think there's an opportunity there to accurately like reflect the kind of people they were and how important what they did is to the district at the time and our community. So, yeah, I'd like, I'd like to have an opportunity to contribute to that.
Okay, okay. Steve?
If I can add, I went to school with Beth right there. It was Forest Street at the time, obviously. Ms. Conley was the principal, but my mom worked for Agnes at the school. And you couldn't find two more enjoyable people, as everyone has said. John would put a smile on every kid's face and every staff person and every teacher. Agnes, she kept a stern way about her, but she was good. She was very, very good. So I think this is a wonderful idea. If there's anything, I know it says that the school district already maintains that path. I know it can get overgrown at times. I don't think they let it. It's been years since I've been down that way, the connection to Belmont Street. But if there's any other beautiful occasion that we can do or ask people to contribute to, that would be another thing. It's going along with this plaque, which would be a good idea.
If I could just quickly add to Steve's, just to piggyback on what you said about Agnes. Yes, she did run a tight ship, but I will also say, I can attest firsthand that when kids got in trouble, she was able to show some compassion and.
Well, that's good.
I might have been in her office a few years.
I was going to say, this is my personal observation here.
That's awesome, that's great.
So maybe we can, yeah, work on that and maybe you can help.
Move to the vote, it hasn't been voted yet.
It hasn't been voted, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we're moving to the vote, so we have to do this.
Vocal.
Vocal, Steve?
Yes.
Steve? Dawn?
Yes.
Chris? And Michelle?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, you got to say it.
Yes.
Fred, yes, Glenn?
Yes.
And yes for me, so unanimous to do that. Very nice, very nice.
And then I have a donation. I received a letter August 20, August 1st. Dear Mrs. Simonak, this letter is to inform you that the district and the district of my intention at our August 23 meeting, 2023, school committee meeting to donate a new HP 14-inch Chromebook laptop, Intel Cell around with bonus sleeve and wireless mouse. It's my pleasure and an honor to be able to donate a Chromebook every year to the district for use, just like any of the Chromebooks we have for our students. Thanks in advance, Mr. Stephen Voice. So, where is it? You got it?
It's in the truck, that's in the mail. Listen, I went to, I spent a couple of hours down in Carver with my 16-month-old nephew, great nephew, nephew number three. His little brother's coming along September 1st. But this boy never stops. And I know the other one won't ever stop. And you just look at these kids, I'm thinking, when do I have to give him a Chromebook? Now. Just take them around in like garden cart. I won't, you know, consider that right now. But I'm more than happy to do this. I really enjoy being able to serve the students, the communities and parents and just everyone. I mean, I've been a resident and hardworking resident. I know Mr. Scribblem will probably say something or remind me of something, but, and that's what I need you for, you know? That's what I need you for. But I'm more than happy. I'm going to give it to you tomorrow before we start the school tours.
If these folks accept it.
I need a motion.
Well, that's to accept.
Second? Second, second by Chris. Okay, all in favor? Steven?
Yes.
Steve? Dawn?
Yes.
Chris? Michelle?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, unanimous.
And just on that, we will start tours tomorrow. Thanks for bringing that up. Nine o'clock here, school committee's invited. We're going to tour every building. I have it open ended until three, so we have plenty of time to take our time. We'll go from the high school to Indian Head to Hanson Middle, to Duval, to Conley, to Whitman Middle. And you can pick us up along the way. If you can't make it at a certain time, text me and I'll tell you where we're at so you can meet us there.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, last thing on the agenda, all right? And we're going to have a few rules on this. It is a complaint against a school committee member. Okay, so this complaint is one member against another, so we have some ground rules. The ground rule is the complainant will speak. I mean, the person suing the complaint will speak, the complainant will answer, and there'll be no further discussion, okay, from anybody. You will give your complaint, you will answer, you will respond, okay? There were two complaints that were on, that were officially sent. So those are the two complaints that we expect to hear from you, Fred.
Absolutely.
And that's it. So no other ones can be added because that's what we know is presented, okay? So you have the floor, knowing my guidance.
I wanted to bring this to the attention of the committee, although one of the incidents, the committee was sitting there when it occurred. And then share my subsequent investigation on it, I guess you could say. On March 8th in our meeting, and I can play this, it's probably going to be, I don't know if I can get it to blow up, but at least you'll be able to hear it.
All I'm saying is we're violating civil rights right now of students. And I want an answer and I want a decision very soon. And I don't want to be violating anyone else's civil rights.
I think, yeah, I think for anyone to make a conclusion as to what we're doing in terms of what we got.
It's not when you call D E S I and that's what the attorney at D E S I tells you.
So let's bring it back. Where would you like to go as a committee? Because right now, on the agenda.
So on that, the troubling part to me was an attorney at D E S I has took, has made a statement, we're committing a civil rights violation. I did ask in our meeting, and I don't know if it was that meeting or the meeting after, I don't recall exactly, the name of the person that Ms. Byers had spoken to or the attorney. And she told me it was George Hale. George is a problem resolutionist in the problem resolution department. I did speak with him. He did remember the conversation with Ms. Byers. He spoke to her on March 1st. He's known attorney. He emphatically told me I would never represent myself as an attorney. There may be people here that are attorneys, but they will not even represent themselves in this department as attorneys because they're not functioning in that capacity. What Mr. Hale had told Ms. Byers on March 1st was that that sounds like a district issue, not a civil rights violation, as long as the time on learning is being met. You know, that there was no civil rights violation. But she wanted the number for the civil rights office in Boston, which he supplied. That was the gist of their conversation. So to put our administration on the spot, saying that the administration was committing a civil rights violation, I feel is a very, very powerful statement. And it wasn't accurate. And that's what bothers me is inaccuracies and when things aren't, you know, right up to snuff, so to speak. On the second occasion, there was a meeting at the Capitol Committee in which Ms. Byers was speaking of having a tour of the schools and having a tour as the new chair of, what was the facilities and Capitol Committee? And I think it's just called Capitol and Technology or?
Capitol Operations.
Capitol and Operations Committee. And I'm going to play, this is the conversation during that meeting.
You mentioned that at the Capitol meeting?
Yeah, I asked, I asked Tim if I could see some of the project work that's going on.
Was that done on behalf of the committee?
No, it was done myself. And I know that other people have done independent walkthroughs with administration of various.
So it wasn't done as a committee person or as the chair of the committee?
What is your question, Fred?
My question is, did you send an email stating that as the chair of the committee wanted to have a tour? Yes or no?
No, I didn't.
You didn't?
I didn't, I.
Okay, so I'll wait on my FOIA request for your emails. I was told that you had sent an email stating as the chair of the committee, you wanted a tour.
Can I make a point about it? Can you pause that please?
Pause that please, 21.
Just a question on this process. Has Ms. Byers been made aware of what Fred's going to present?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And as a committee, I would have thought that the whole committee would have been invited to something like that. Or it would have said something in an open meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
And that was the conversation. So the following day I did file the FOIA request. And as just passed around, the email that was sent on Tuesday, March 21st. Hi Jeff and Tim, as the chair of the Ops and Tech Subcommittee, I'd like to schedule a facilities tour. So when asked in our meeting whether she had done it as herself or as the chairperson, she emphatically said, no, I did not. And it's just a matter of, you know, being truthful with each other. My point would have been as the chair, I would have hoped that the whole committee could have been invited. And that was it, you know? But it's the point that it was said, no, I did not, that, you know, furthered the foster for the complaint.
Okay. All right, Dawn, response please. That's why she has response, because she did know.
Great, much information.
To my fellow committee members and the Whitman Hansen community, my priority has always been working towards continuous improvement in student achievement. Even though I had the right to keep this matter in executive session, I elected to have it in open session so the public can be witness. Regarding my phone call with D E S I, I believed what I was told when the person I spoke with on the phone told me I was being transferred to an attorney. I believed when that person told me on the phone, someone could file a civil rights violation. That was the conversation.[1723.05] That was the conversation. I had no reason to believe otherwise. Regarding the email, I didn't have a copy of that exact email in front of me when, at the time, I was questioned during that meeting. I may have misspoken about the wording I used in an email, however, it was not a deliberate